Accept the things we cannot change, the courage to change the things we can, and the wisdom to know the difference.
Amen.
Pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first order of business is oath of office for a board. If you would come forward so our county attorney can, Mr. Kendrick, can give you the oath. Ms. Dawn Austin. That's nice.
I have to re-miss with you.
Yeah.
................................................................................................................................................................................................... Now, I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Love. She has a special presentation to make.
A lot of what we do is work, and mixed in with some of that, tonight is a little bit of fun. If I can't ask Carol Whisnant to come up to the podium. Just right there, Carol. I get to recognize you tonight.
It's good.
This is Carol Whisnant, y'all. And Carol works with FICUS. That stands for Friends of York County Animal Shelter. And she is our, I don't know if she's crazy, but she is our cat lady. And I have to say that it's unbelievable to me that she, last year, in 2017, personally rescued and found homes for 704 cats.
Wow.
Plus one that our finance manager's daughter found. It was a little black kitty. And when he called me and says, "What do I do?", I said, "Let me call Carol." So, 705 cats rescued out of animal control, and I just think that's awesome.
We have an old certificate, and we hope the name is spelled right. Is it?
It is. We got it right. I appreciate you. Thanks for everything you do.
I appreciate that. Thank you. And thank y'all.
Nobody signed up for the public forum, so the next item is consent agenda. I want to pull out one thing, number 11, and make it the last thing under new business, number five. As I looked it over this weekend, I had some questions, and then I talked to Michael Summ a little bit, and missed some of the council members. We can have a motion for everything other than that, and then I'll clarify my question. But it'll be, we'll talk about it under number five, but I'll let you know while I'm pulling it out.
The only additional comment I'd like to make in our packet, instead of minutes, we had actions. That will be corrected in the formal version to have the minutes as opposed to the actions.
So, can we have a motion for consent agenda other than?
Move to approve consent agenda.
Other than number 11?
We took care of that. I'll second.
Discussion. All those favors say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no, and I'll just talk about it when we get to it. Next item, public hearing. First one is rezoning action to hold a public hearing and consider second reading, case number 1734, to rezon the property from AGC to RUD at 4615 Lockhart Road in the Sharon Community. Anybody here that wants to speak against? Anybody here that wants to speak for? Do we have a motion to close?
Move to close.
Second.
Discussion. All those favors say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Do we have a new motion?
Move to approve rezoning.
Second.
Discussion. All those favors say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Next item, hold public hearing and consider second reading, case number 1735, rezoned from AGC to RUD at 1737 Highway 557 in the Clover community. Anybody here want to speak against? Yes, sir. And name and address for the clerk to counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
My name is Jim Young. I live at 167 Lawson Lakes Road in Clover. And I'm speaking on behalf of property owners on Lawson Lakes Road. Lawson Lakes is a road with housing that has been developed since the 1970s. We have 12 homes on Lawson Lakes Road. Like many of us in York County, we're concerned with what's happening to the land around us. A lot of changes over the years, for sure. On one side of Lawson Lakes Road, we've had the Oaks at Clover development come in with a couple of hundred at least home, high-density homes. We're about to see the development of another 65 acres immediately cross Highway 557 from Lawson Lakes Road. It's more than likely going to be high-density homes, from what we're hearing from the town of Clover and from the property owner and the prospective property buyer. On Lawson Lakes Road, this is about our last opportunity to control or to have any say in what happens to our property. We have five property owners whose property is adjacent to the property which is planned for rezoning. So, our concern's about the character of our neighborhood and our property values as things change. Now, we have had only a week, unfortunately, from the notice of this hearing, to investigate and learn things about zoning that most of us didn't really know, which I would just ask you if in the future, if you could provide a greater amount of time for these things, it would be very helpful to us. That notwithstanding, while the residents are, have differing opinions, and it's a little bit difficult to get a really strong unanimous agreement on where we want to go, generally, we feel that the AGC designation right now is probably fine and doesn't need to be changed. However, we have discussed, and we are generally in agreement, that if restrictions would be put on this RUD, such that you would give a conditional rezoning, and these restrictions have actually been proposed by the property owner, current property owner, through his representative, then we would generally be in favor of that rezoning to, a conditional rezoning to RUD. Otherwise, we would prefer that that land remains zoned as AGC as currently stands. So, those are our comments.
Thank you, Jim. Anybody else opposed? Anybody for? Have a motion to close?
Move to close.
Second.
Discussion. Yes, sir. Sorry, I didn't see you. Are you for or against?
I'm sorry?
Are you for or against?
No, I'm for the rezoning.
Four? Okay. So, name and address.
George Johnson, 1737 Highway 557, Clover. I'd like to say that my wife and I bought the property on 557 two years ago with the purpose for our family residence and a greenhouse landscape operations. As time has passed, we feel like a different parcel would go in a different place, a different parcel would be, actually fit our needs better. In order to move forward, I'd like to rezon to RUD for two house sites for the sale of fund of future move. So, that's why I'm proposing that today.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it, George. Anybody else for? Yes, sir. Just name and address.
Kyle Hoover, 4663 Percival Road, Rock Hill. And I'm helping Mr. Johnson with the sale of this property and purchasing new property. And I just wanted to go over some facts that, about the property now and what his plans are. He's wanting to get out further away into a truly ag area. We don't feel that this area is truly an ag area any longer. His business plans have changed, just like he said. And not sure if everyone's aware, but in the current zoning of AGC, he could split the property, worst-case scenario, sell a five-acre tract, have his house on a six-acre tract, and the new buyers could put two dwellings on each tract. So, a total of four houses on the property. What we're planning on is doing a total of three tracks, one home per track, a minimum 2,000 square feet, stick-built home. Property would never be subdivided again.
Number two, public.
Probably. No, no, it would never be subdivided again. And we would ask that council and staff put those conditions on the property that would go into the deed of each tract. And that being said, Griggs Road was straightened out, not because of ag reasons, because of local traffic in the area, residential growth, just like the big subdivision that backs up on the other side of Lawson Lakes.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Can I ask him a quick question? Because I thought he said two houses, and now he's saying four houses total would be?
No, three total, what we're proposing for rezoning.
Additionals?
Two additional houses.
Two additions. Okay.
Yep.
Got you.
Okay. Anybody else for? Have a motion to close?
Move to close.
Second.
Discussion. All those favors say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Do we have a new motion?
Motion to deny with discussion.
Second.
Okay. Discussion.
So, I just wanted to-
Ms. Love.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, you're good.
I thought we were going in alphabetical order. I just wanted to ask-
Last name, not first.
There are a lot of people here tonight who have not spoken, so if I can just ask you to, if your first choice is to not have this rezoned at all, and I think one of the best examples that the landowner has given tonight is when he says that it's not truly ag any longer and they're leaving. I think that's a, I think that's a shame. And so, that's where we've, that's where we've come. That's how far we've come. So, if I could just ask you to stand if you prefer that this not be rezoned at all. So, and if I can ask you to stand if you are, would be satisfied with the rezoning with specific conditions put on the property. Okay. Where do I go from here?
I was going to say, what was your motion? I think you went, oops.
No, 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 because I know what I would do. I know what I would do if I lived there. So, but I represent, that's who I represent. So, okay, so I'm going to amend my motion to approve with-
Withdrawn.
To withdraw, to withdraw.
Withdrawn.
And who gave the second? Michael, you're good.
I withdraw the second.
Okay.
And so, I'll make a new motion to approve with restrictions that we would come up with between now and the third reading.
Second.
Discussion.
I would ask that the residents and the landowner specifically put those restrictions in writing so that we can read them into the record, the next one. When we're sitting up here, it's often difficult for us to make sure we've incorporated everything that you have said. So, please put that in writing and get that to the planning department staff, specifically, Mr. Merriman probably, so that we can, we can be prepared in two weeks to do that for you.
And conditions might be, the conditions you want applied to the zoning.
Yeah, and in assumption of that, and the conditions he'd be acceptable to the planning staff as well. And, yeah, because I mean, this is, I think that's the best, that's the best way to go. If he can build four houses now, in conditions you can only build three, so they gets what the neighbors want.
Yeah. Anybody else? Question on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Next item, hold public hearing, consider second reading, case number 1739. I think that was just a UD, yeah, UD rezoning projects. Do we have anybody that is?
Y'all are welcome to stay.
Y'all are going to miss-
Entertainment just started.
Y'all don't want to miss this now. Okay. Oh, well.
The later it gets, the better it gets.
Three. So, anybody here opposed? Anybody for? Have a motion?
Move. Second.
Discussion. All those favors say aye.
Aye.
New motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Next item, council to hold a public hearing and consider second reading of an ordinance to amend the Code of York County, South Carolina, Sections 150.42, fees 150.57, variances and appeals, conditions for appeals, 150.99 penalty, in order to remove the fee table from Section 150.42 and reference the fee table in Section 31.01, update the name of the Building Code's Appeals Board to the Building Board of Appeals, authorize the Building Board of Appeals to review civil fines, revise the penalties for violating the Building Code by allowing for the imposition of civil fines and removing criminal penalties, and to provide for other minors related thereto. Anybody here want to speak against? Anybody wants to speak in favor?
Move to close.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Well, I didn't hear a second, did I?
Second.
Oh, you said second. Right. Sorry.
Second.
How could I, how could I miss Chad's second? Go figure. See, it hasn't affected heart surgery on you.
Yeah, I didn't think it had ear surgery.
It must, yeah, it must affect your hearing.
I'm glad they found one.
Wow, yeah. Okay. Christie.
Welcome back.
I didn't say a word.
I know you didn't.
I did not say a word.
But you taught him that. Okay. Discussion. Question on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Next item, council to hear, hold a public hearing, consider amending in third reading of an ordinance to provide for the granting and re-issuance of a non-exclusive franchise to Carolina Water Service Incorporated for the operation of water and sewer systems within a certain defined territory in York County, South Carolina, to provide for the term and geographical area of such franchise, to prescribe and regulate the terms and conditions of service, to establish standards and regulations for the operation of such water and sewer service systems, to provide for the revocation, cancellation, or reduction of the area of such franchise, to authorize the execution of the franchise agreement with Carolina Water Service Incorporated, and to provide for other minors related thereto. Anybody want to speak against? Anybody want to speak in favor?
Move to close.
Second.
Discussion. All those favors say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Need a new motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the, sir?
I'm good.
Okay. Question on the, question on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Okay. No more public hearings, so we go to old business. We're going to get a update from the Public Works Director, Eric Rickett, to provide council with an update on veterinary services at the York County Animal Control. Welcome, sir.
Thank you, Chairman. Counsel. Basically, I'm just going to provide a brief presentation per your request at the last January 16 meeting regarding the vet services and animal control and things that led to that and how we were going to prevent the issue that we came across. Just to recap, the vet and the vet tech left in September of 2017. At this time, we had a rising intake, and during this time, we averaged about 300 to 350 animals in the shelter. So, at that time, we received multiple quotes from vets to provide the services in the absence of the veterinarian, and we had three quotes. We were using all three with a majority of them going to one vendor who happened to be the vet that just resigned. And that was due to her availability at the time. An interesting thing, following our last meeting, I went back and we looked at the cost, and we compared the cost of contracting these services out in that three-month period before we had the new part-time vet compared to the cost of the salary of that vet and the vet tech that had left. Coincidentally, the costs were actually $3,000 less contracting during that period than that of the salary and the benefits during that three-month period of paying the vet and the vet tech. Not saying that's the right thing going forward, but I just thought that was interesting. We were kind of floating by there. There's some things we want to do. That's not the best approach moving forward, but I just wanted to bring that up. So, in an effort to prevent this sort of thing from happening again, there's a couple of things we did in the process and since then. The purchase of controlled drugs was maintained by the current vet that was there. You have to have a DEA and a DHEC license for controlled substances. Upon her resignation, upon her telling us she was going to resign, we started the process to obtain a shelter license where we could then purchase and maintain these controlled substances and get our own license. That process took about two and a half months. There was an application period with two different agencies, and there were inspections, and we actually received it on December 1st. So, moving forward, we, we now have our own license, and we don't have to rely on the vet in the, in the case that they were to leave. So, we now have the license to purchase controlled substances, and as long as we have the certified staff, we can administer them in the absence of a vet. Secondly, we did solicit an RFQ for an on-call list of qualified vets. We did this in November, and our intent was to get multiple vets for emergency services, livestock care, and advanced medical care, things that maybe our vet couldn't do in-house once we had one, and, and in the absence of them, either on vacation or not available, or in the case that they should leave. We only received one response to that, and that was actually, in the consent agenda tonight, we rejected that one bid because it didn't meet our, our need. We actually needed multiple vets. So, in reaching out to the vets that did not partake in that, we found out that many of them were too busy, they weren't, they weren't prepared to put together detailed qualifications. They found our RFQ to be a little too detailed, and they just, so our thought going forward, now that that has been rejected, we are going to re-advertise that, make it a little easier in hopes to get multiple vets, you know, on a contract basis moving forward and go through the proper procurement process. Thirdly, it's just overall, we're making improvements to the shelter. I think people are starting to notice we're making improvements. We're moving forward with new programs. They focus on education, they focus on reducing intake, and increasing the livesave rate. And one of the main things, you know, counsel, you've recognized Ms. Carol this evening for her rescue efforts, there's many other people in this room, we rely on those rescue groups to help us achieve these goals. And I think as we are improving, they're noticing that we're improving and more willing to work with us and partner with us, and we really appreciate their help, and we're really thankful for that. We do now have a full-time, or a part-time vet. We are exploring full-time or multiple part-time vets. We're just exploring as we go along, and we are in the process of searching for a new supervisor as well. So, that's basically our plan moving forward. I'll take any questions if you have.
Questions for Eric? Nope. Nope.
Now, I appreciate your letter ahead of time. It explained everything you, you talked about, and I know you explained the drug handling ability before, but I, until I read it, that I, that that made, now I understand a whole lot more where the delay came from.
Right. Mr. Roddy.
You mentioned some improvements or changes being made. Can you kind of spit a couple of those out for us and?
In the future, we have a strategic plan. We'll be coming to either Public Works Committee or Council. Some things, looking at managed intake, it's, it's an effort to reduce the intake coming in by requiring, owner surrenders are a big problem. If we reduce the intake coming in by setting up this managed intake process, we can help provide people with other opportunities to get rid of their pets rather than coming through the shelter. We'll work with these rescue groups, and we'll, and we'll try to partner with them so the animal can go straight to them, or we can help the owner of the animal keep their pet. They may have, they just may have a small issue with their pet, and they're just tired of dealing with it. We might be able to provide them with the resources that they can move on and continue with their pet and their home. So, that's one thing. We're exploring community cats or trapped neuter release. Right now, we're just exploring that, but these are, those are some of the big changes that we're looking at and exploring.
Neuter release work.
Yeah, there's been some changes to the facility itself. With the, the new part-time vet, there's been some changes in the shelter standards for veterinary care. So, we're just improving across the board, trying to get out there more and do some more education. Just this last week, we've had kids come on two different occasions and come to the shelter and sit down and read to the pets. That, so those are fluffy little things that are nice.
Read to the pets?
Yes. Yes. They sit down on blankets on the floor and reads to the pets, and enriches the animal, and it's great for the kids, a great opportunity.
Maybe that's what's wrong with my puppy. I need to read to him more. Mr. Roddy, if you would, your committee, kind of have a couple meetings dealing with this, because they got a lot going on right now.
Yeah, I noticed you said they were going to bring some stuff to the, to the committee.
Unless they bring it up.
We're ready.
Yeah, because you need to, really, your committee needs to oversight this.
We, we do have a plan that's put together that we will be bringing before you. One other thing that we've started with, that we have done too, is we have put cameras in the facility because, as you know, in the past, there's been complaints that things have happened in the facility. Now, we have a time and date, we can look at it, and that has been very helpful to us over the last couple of months since it's been uploaded.
Anybody else? And we talked a little bit about this, and I think you addressed it, but I mean, one thing, though, that you didn't address, did I hear correctly at our luncheon that there's an epidemic right now of cat rabies?
There, no. I don't think that's entirely true. Rabies is just, generally, rabies control in York County is, I don't know if it's an epidemic proportion, I don't want to speak for vets.
I mean feral cats, not our-
There are definitely a lot of feral cats. Yes, feral cats are, are an issue, and that drives our intake up, yes.
I guess the reason I ask is going to, is it going to reach a point with your ability to think ahead to the point where it's going to be a public health problem with the situation?
That trapping release that he was talking, trapped neuter release will hit.
Trapped neuter release is one way to help with that, because you're essentially taking it, you're, you're providing immunization, rabies, and then releasing them back with that, with that. So, that will help with that.
Are you talking to the state vet association to get some names for possible doc vets to help or whatever?
Now that we have got that contact, we are going to reach out to them.
Any other questions? Thanks, Eric. Appreciate it. Next item, consider third reading, case number 1732, rezoned from AGC to RC2 at 2275 New Gray Rock Road in the Fort Mill Community.
Make a motion to defer until the April 7th meeting.
Discussion. Question, question on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Next item, consider third reading, case number 1741, rezoned property from BD3 to RC2, 1456 Dunlap Roddy Road.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ohs, no. Next item, new business. Consider first reading, case number 1736, resound from RD2 to BD3 at 1080 and 1088 Isom Road in the Fort Mill community.
Yes, I move to approve, subject to the following conditions. Number one, the applicant shall contribute $13,000 per the traffic impact analysis to cover the cost of a future traffic signal, should a signal be warranted. Number two, prior to third reading, the applicant must provide a copy of the signed and recorded access easement document.
Second.
I understand there might be a few more coming, but first reading, that's the start.
Any further discussion? Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ohs, no. Next item, consider first reading, case number 1738, resound from UD to RC1 at Southeast Corner of Brookview Drive, and is that Blucher Circle in the Lake Wile E. community?
Motion to approve with conditions, those being, we would not want this lot masqueraded and not to be padded for on-grade slab, and we would like a 100-foot buffer around the lot.
Need a second.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ohs, no. Next item, consider first reading, case number 1740, resound from RUD to BD, I'm sorry, RUD to RD1, 3519 Pleasant Road in the Fort Mill community.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
I would like to...
Yes, sir.
I had two people, neighbors, contact me today about this who were not in support of this. I intend to reach out to them to have further discussion prior to second reading, but if any of, if the tails are here or are interested, they should contact me as well to discuss this.
Any other comments? Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ohs, no. Next item, council to consider creating a veterans' memorial park ad hoc advisory committee and appointing John Mattingly, a veteran from the western side of the county, Ronnie Taylor, a veteran from the western side of the county, Robert Sweat, a veteran from the eastern side of the county, Mike Fuser, a member of the York City Council, Patricia Mickel, a private citizen from the eastern side of York County, whose collective service on the ad hoc committee shall be on an interim basis until a formal veterans' park advisory committee is established by ordinance and applicants for service are vetted and recommended by the county finance and operations committee.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Yes, sir, Mr.?
I would like to say, the first reading title only of this ordinance was in the consent agenda tonight, so...
Okay.
Just so the public knows that was part of what this was.
No further comments. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ohs, no. Last item is the one I moved out of consent. Council to consider adopting a resolution directing the York County Planning Commission to conduct the studies related to the imposition of development impact fees applicable to the unincorporated area of York County and associated with the public facilities for county government operations and the transportation network considered necessary for the proper operation of the government of York County, and recommend the resulting impact fee ordinance related there too. Need a motion?
Move to approve.
Need a second.
Second.
Discussion. Okay, the reason I pulled it, because as I read it over again Sunday and was thinking about it, of course, I agree 100% the town of Fort Mill, this is really about the only option they have. I mean, I don't see that they have any other option. But then I started wondering when I read the amount that we would pay for the county's part, and of course, we're going to get reimbursed by Fort Mill for the Fort Mill part. I wondered that being close to $100,000 now, is this going to involve the whole county blanket where we... Because the only other section that would even seem logical to me would be maybe some of the Lake Wile E. area, and that's it in my mind. I mean, certainly, the south side of the county around York, western half, would make no sense. So, my concern then came, well, can we fragment it out in that way? And I'm not hearing a warm and fuzzy clear answer on that. Mr. Williams?
The, as the reason that I made the motion to approve it was impact fees, we've been talking about, a lot about growth management, and talked a lot about it, that was a strategic plan, comprehensive plan, it is a tool. Staff had told us that they were going to, you know, look at it. The impact fees have to, I mean, they have to be related to, it's all about making growth pay for growth. They don't, it's not punitive, it doesn't, it doesn't, I mean, it doesn't discourage growth, but if you have an impact, if you're, if you have an impact on our water and sewer, then you, then the growth pays for that impact rather than the citizens. So, I think it's a good idea to study it. I think we owe it to our citizens to look at every way we can, and that was a big portion of me wanting to... I do like the fact that it goes hand in hand with the Fort Mill one. I think that we're sharing some costs there, and it's cheaper, but I think we owe it to our citizens to at least look at this, at this tool, but it's, used to be, you could do impact fees about wherever you wanted to. Luckily, now, they've gone, they're regulated to the point where it's, I mean, it, it's growth paying for growth, that's what it's about.
Yeah. Any other? Yes, sir, Mr. Winkler?
I think we owe it to look at it, because it is part of what we've all said, is, you know, growth management's a big thing for the county, and we need to look at all the options, and that's one of the tools that's in there. But I do have questions about it, and I've had some of my constituents, you know, address some of their concerns with me, and so, I know you can address the impact on the roads, the impact on the other, and that's where I've got some clarification, because most of the residents in my district would not have any impact on the water and sewer, but they might have impact on roads, and so that's where I need more clarification, and we get all this, you know, studied and figured out.
I'll just come down the line, it's on Mr. Roddy saying that.
I was writing a question as we went along, saying, what would we do, what would this council do if it comes back? Just perfect example that Robert mentioned, if one area would impact the system or what we do more than others, will we be able to, say, Fort Mill, this would be an impact fee for Fort Mill, unincorporated. Southern Rock Hill, unincorporated, it's a different fee, because I don't think the impact will be the same, so people, builders or home buyers, or if I'm building my own home, saying, well, I'm not impacting as much as Fort Mill, so why am I paying 10 grand? Why wouldn't I pay less if I have a impact, a smaller impact on the area? So, that's going to be a tough, tough, tough one to crack there, to be fair and equitable to people that may not impact the water or...
If it's a water impact fee, and you don't impact the water, you don't pay the fee. And that, years ago, we've had some that were just a number, and they've been grandfathered in, and you can't do that anymore. It, you have to show, that's what this study does, is show us, but I imagine this study's going to tell us whether it's worthwhile to go through the process to develop them, and that's where we have to come up with capital facilities plan and how you fund it, and this is, this much affects that. We do, I mean, whether we do the impact fee study or not, our water agreement, we will be paying for our portion of, our growth portion of the increased capacity of both water and wastewater as we go through our provider, and that's already there. Some of the impact fees can help pass that along if necessary, but the good thing about what Mr. Roddy was talking about, it, you just can't happen that, you don't just throw a number out there. If you don't have an, if you don't impact something...
You shouldn't be paying.
Like, if there's a, if, you know, there probably, we've been talking about a west water system and an east water system, so if it was a water impact fee, it would depend on which water system you impacted and how much it costs, but it's, that's the great thing about impact fees nowadays, it's, it's growth paying for growth.
Ms. Cox?
I agree wholeheartedly with Councilman Williams' comments. We definitely owe it to our existing residents to look at this and to make sure that we're not forcing them to pay for costs that developers put on the community by what they're building, and I do think that we need to let this expert do their job and look at the situation and give us recommendations. I think it's in our comp plan, we discussed it's the number one item that we picked up and that we're going to take to deal with this year was growth management, and I think we've got, we've got to move forward with it. Our existing residents shouldn't be responsible for that. Growth should pay for growth.
Mr. Johnson?
Or do you want to go last?
Well, I'm happy to go right now. And I'll be very simple, very quick. To me, this is, this is easy. If I don't know the answers to the questions, I can't even, I can't even try to solve the puzzle. This is going to be a tool that I'm going to use to make a determination on whether or not we need impact fees or not. This is not a predetermined impact fee, this is something we're going to weigh. There may be parts of it I like, there may be parts I really dislike, and if I dislike it enough, I will vote it down, but I, I can tell you, if you've been in Fort Mill T U K lately, we deserve the opportunity to make sure that that's not recreated all over this county, and that this may be the tool to stop that.
Yeah, I would agree with that, and I think, you know, the impact is, they're building blocks, and every, every time you add another development, you add more impact, so it's not that, you know, maybe Fort Mill is full and the impact of a development is more, but, and maybe it's less in another district, but as the district who is seeing a lot of growth and a lot of impact, I think it's, I think it's critical to start as early as you can with impact fees, not wait until it's totally built out and you're done, and all the people have gotten, gotten their foot in the door, and then you start trying to put impact fees as a last resort. So, I hate that Fort Mill didn't do something earlier, I mean, you see the situation there with their schools now, that's because maybe there weren't enough, there wasn't an impact fee charged early on, but the impact's still there, and so, for my district, we are, we are very impacted by development and our roads and everything. I mean, the schools, you know, the school hasn't cried out for help yet in Clover, but they will, and so I think the study will tell us it's the fork in the road, and it's going to tell us which way to go.
You done?
I've spoken enough. Unless you want me to speak some more?
Oh, God, no.
You not hear me the first time?
I did.
Okay.
See what you've done. He wasn't like that before.
Don't blame it all on me, I'll take it.
But anyway, I agree with all the comments made. I mean, it's very logical. I just, when I read it and I saw it was $100,000 fee for our part, I, it made me just rethink it, and with the state law, the new state law, and Fort Mill, absolutely, they don't have an option, that's what triggered this. I agree 10,000%. But my question, concern was, well, obviously, I don't agree with the logic in two or three areas, big areas of the county. So, with this study, am I, and I, am I agreeing to an up or down? Since I'm not agreeable to it in certain areas for the whole county, there's no need to be support spending $100,000, I'm going to vote against it anyway. But if it can be, like Mr. Williams pointed out, and I guess you're getting ready to say, it can apply to just the sections we need it, I'm open to that.
Sure. I mean, this is, I think Mr. Johnson summarized it as eloquently as anybody, this is, we don't know what we don't know, and this is, this could put the issue to bed, to be quite honest with you. The recommendation come back is saying you have nowhere where an impact fee would be applicable, but we don't know what we don't know. So, no, sir, all you're doing is a vote, an affirmative vote today engages the process.
So, per what you're saying is it can be, if they say, yes, you need it in these certain areas...
Sure.
We can apply it to those areas and not be a county-wide thing.
I mean, it could very well be a public safety impact fee, it could be very well, and then we can look at geographic now.
It doesn't have to be all or none.
No, sir.
Okay, then I'm good. All right. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ohs, no. Next item, committee reports. The Honorable Kristy Cox will give justice and public safety committee meeting. Were you there?
No, I need to thank Chad and Robert for holding down the fort. I spoke with Sheriff Tolson and Andy at length today, but if you got, if one of you can...
Yeah, they, Robert picked me to be chairman and Kristy stayed, so I thought that was the best choice available. No, at least the second best choice available, so we did think. But no, we did meet. The only item on the agenda was to discuss, a discussion regarding proposed East Side Justice Center. That is something that we have discussed before. It's brought to us at this time because there's some situations that are arriving that we're going to have to look at and figure out ways to address them. A new justice center may be a way, and we may find other ways, but that was our, basically our discussion, was that, yeah, the update on the problem, see the problem, solve the problem, so staff just gives an update that this issue is being looked at.
Any other comments? And I guess it was, I don't, I guess made clear is the best word, that we're a little bit at the mercy of the other towns in the county in terms of our future direction.
Yeah, the discussion, yeah, the discussion involved around, the main discussion was that, yeah, we're trying to solve the problem and cooperate with other cities as, and that a building does not have to be the answer, but it might be the answer, might be part of the answer, but, but anyway, yeah, that solving that, finding out ways to work together is what it's all about.
Next item, council member new non-agenda comments. Any council member have anything they want to add? Yes, ma'am, Ms. Love?
I'd like to pass out some papers here. You'll all pass these down, each, everybody gets two. So, one of the things that's happening in my district is that developers are coming in, and maybe they've caught wind, but I'm not really open to... I don't know if I can keep this. Yeah. I don't think that one. So, so what's happening is that they are calling and they're wanting to meet with the people of my district, and we had a meeting, and when I went to the meeting, I was shocked to see the posters that they had up on the walls, and the result of that was that the people, they were probably 100 people through the meeting in all, and as they, as they went through the line, talking to the developer, they were being told different things, and they were being told things that were not accurate. So, I finally just said, you know, everybody have a seat, and I'm going to let the developer make a presentation for everybody all at one time, because I needed to hear. Andy was there, Stephen Allen from Planning His Own was there, so I just felt like we needed to hear and correct anything that was, that was not right. So, one of the, one of the problems was that they showed us what was allowed now for what they could put, what they could put there now, and that, that was 78 homes and no green space. So, I was like, wow, we need to get, we need to get ahead of that, we need to fix that ordinance, which we're working, working on those things. So, what I've given counsel tonight is this, and it's going to be hard for you all to see, but this map shows that they can put 89 units on, let's see how many acres do they have? They had, they have 89, I think it's 79 acres, and they can put 89 units on it. This is what they are currently allowed to do. I about fell over when I saw their map of the 2035 future land use plan that allows up to, at five dwelling units per acre, 890 units. So, so my question that night and ever since has been, is this growth management? I mean, if it was this picture and we went to this, maybe that's growth management, but this really concerns me. So, what I would love for us to do is, if you want to do it for your district, I definitely want to do this for my district, and I've already stated this, and we've already done a little bit of it, but at this point, this scares me, and I want to move a little faster. So, what has happened now is that the developer has shown this to the people who were there, and they said, you know, either you, you like what we've presented tonight, which is 189 homes, 100 more than they're allowed to put without a rezoning, or the county's going to allow 890 units. So, the people are like, or, we're either going to have a trailer park, or we're going to have 890 units. And the reality is, we're going to have 78 if we have anything, okay? So, I just, I'm frustrated, and I want to be sure that, you know, for my district, I want to say this to everybody, because I think it's important for everybody who's not already built out, or who maybe doesn't have any growth at all, which I don't know who that would be, is, I think it's very important, you know, because in everything, everything that we look at, the group that was here tonight, you know, when we say that it's consistent with the 2035 plan, well, my gosh, I don't want to have to worry about what that 2035 plan actually allows. So, I want to go through for District 2 and with a fine-tooth comb and say, okay, let's, let's look at every area like this and determine what, what do we want there? You know, I've only got three more years on this council, and it's going to take that long to do this. So, I think it's important that we start. I'm just so frustrated, having been on the Comprehensive Land Use Committee for a year and a half, and I feel like, I mean, I really didn't even know what we were doing, because this is shocking to me, and if I called my fellow committee members and said, you know, did you realize we were, we were doing this? I don't think they, they do. So, I don't know what the solution is to it. I don't know if we, if we have a, have another committee, I mean, I don't know what we do, but at some point, we need to know exactly what the future land use plan is, and I'm just going to tell you, this is not it for my district. I mean, this is, it's critical, we're at a critical point in Lake Wile E., and poor Clover, oh my word, I mean, Clover right now is, you know, when we push them out of Lake Wile E., they head to Clover, and that's exactly what they've done in the last two months. So, it's, it's a problem, and I just, I don't know really what else to say or who to say it to, but, so I figured I'd say it tonight publicly, and just let you know that it's very frustrating, and I just, I'm asking for some help.
All right. Anybody else? Any other comments? There are...
I think I would like to comment on that. It's been several instances in my district where developers have attempted to use this threat of a mobile home park in order to increase the number of lots that are... increase the number of lots that are available inside a particular area. That, to me, is problematic, I know this council has talked about it before, I think one solution to that is, and I don't have any issue with mobile home, I've lived in one, I think the problem is, do we allow this to be used as a threat to, near our residents, that there's going to be an entire mobile home park if you don't acquiesce to what we want? And so, I think that we've got to figure out how to stop that, and the council, we've talked about this before, and I think a way to address it would be for the zoning committee to at least follow up on that and the issue that council, that Allison has brought up too.
Okay. Any other comments that are not related to this, because we're not supposed to obviously have an open discussion about any discussion by a council member? There being none, do we have a, and there, nobody signed up for citizen concerns, do we have a motion for executive session?
Yes, sir, I may we go to an executive session to discuss the personnel matter involving the Assistant Planning Director, to discuss a contractual matter involving the Goodmutter site in Rock Hill, and personnel matter involving the county manager evaluation process, process, none evaluation.
Discussion. All of us in favor say aye?
Aye.
So, we'll be back at 7 o'clock to finish up. No action items? Do we have any further discussion?
Move to adjourn.
Second. Discussion, all of us in favor say aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned.